Good morning, everyone. If I could ask everyone just to check their cell phones. Check my own before I... This is Monday, August 3rd, 10:00 a.m. This is a scheduled Sletman's meeting. And I have minutes of our meeting held on July 20th right here. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We're going to do the pledge.
Oh, yeah, we do need to do the pledge. I'm sorry. My goodness, I'm all business this morning. Shall we stand for the pledge? I'm sorry, Sonny.
One of the boys remembered it.
Same, yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that. Well, it's just I rest on it. All right, that's because I was looking at the agenda and we have so many things. Let's just take a revote on the minutes, please. All in favor?
Aye.
In accounts, payables, and manifests, we will be in tomorrow to sign those.
Correct.
John? Okay, under new... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
If we could just note that we do have Zoom is operating. And we do have someone that has called in. I'm not sure who it is. But they have called in. So there is someone listening into the meeting. And you are live on livestream as well.
Awesome, all right. Our first order of business is travel and quarantine policy review and adoption.
Yes, so you have in front of you a travel and quarantine policy to address some of the issues that have arisen or concerns that have arisen regarding travel outside of the New England states.
And this is for our employees?
This would be for all employees.
All employees.
This would relate to everyone, both union and non-union. It has been reviewed by the AFSCME representative along with each of the bargaining units. As far as I know, each one has discussed it. They had no problems with it. The only concern that they had raised was that it be revisited in the event that DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services, changed their guidelines or there was some other change by the CDC.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would be revisited at the end of the year, December 31st. It basically, it's not forbidding anyone from traveling. It's just saying that when you return, you have to quarantine for 14 days or obtain a test and wait until those results come back. We currently, under the expanded family medical leave and expanded sick time, their time would be covered and we would submit it to Gopher. At this time, no one has utilized that provision of the CARES Act. So it would, at this point, still be available to everyone.
But obviously, if things change, that probably would not be available.
Right, and right now, that's expected. The CARES Act is expected to go through the end of the year. So I don't see any conflict there. But it really is, you know, meant to ensure that when they get back...
That they keep the right...
That they are, yeah. So this is for your consideration. It's been reviewed by town council. Again, reviewed by our turn... The unions distributed to everyone, including staff, as a draft to see if there were any questions.
And there were no questions.
There was only one question that was submitted to me, and that was a question regarding, were we going to actually do the testing? And my response was, no, there are several opportunities in locations where you can be tested. It's covered by our insurance. Or if for some reason you didn't have insurance, it's offered to, you know, free of charge, so...
Now, I believe the urgent care?
Both convenient MD and Clear Choice are both providers of the test.
And that's right in town?
Correct. The state is closing some of the remote sites that they have that are currently at the various armories. That's up and coming at some point. But who knows with the latest numbers?
Okay, the numbers are going up.
That could very well change as well.
Yep, yep. I have no trouble with it. I read through it and I have no issues, especially if the union and everyone has agreed to this. I think it's just another added precaution for everyone else that works for us, that's for sure.
I have a quick question.
Oh, yes.
Something that's kind of came to mind recently.
Yeah?
What about children that are living out of state who come to visit their employee parents? And they're coming from areas such as Arizona...
Arizona, Flor... Florida?
Places like that. And the other thing is, obviously, you're coming into the cold and flu season, which means their children are going to be throwing displays of popping runny nose, fever. We have that kind of employee issue. I'm dealing with that one right now. But I also have another employee whose son just came here from Arizona. So how do we... I'm just looking at this thinking...
I don't know that we can... I obviously would have to look further into that. But I don't know that we can regulate who visited... Yeah, who visits.
I suppose it's...
No, my question is, though, how do we bring the employee back to work? Do we have to employ the 14-day quarantine because they came from a hotspot? The child came from a hotspot to here, traveling through international airports?
I would not interrupt you, but I would say whoever did this policy, the number-one leading state in the United States right now is Vermont, percentage-wise. Safe to go to Vermont.
But, John, this just... This is in accordance with Department of Health and Human Services and CDC.
But your question's a good one, but we're condoning Vermont, which is our neighborhood state.
It hasn't changed.
Yeah?
We have to go by what's being proposed as the guideline outcome, so...
I understand that, but here, you know, someone comes back here and says, you know, my kids go on a camp over at Lake George.
You know, my concern is, obviously, we're saying that the employee, if the employee leaves the state and goes somewhere else, they come back and they either test or they don't test, and they're off for 14 days. They come back to work to keep the employees in the building safe. But here, we have family members. It doesn't have to be children. It can be adult parents or whatever that live out of state that come here to the employee's home, and that's where they're staying. Should we look at employing the 14 days because they came from that area? Or, you know, I mean, it sounds like you're throwing dice against the wall here. If that person comes from Arizona and the employee goes back to work without a test or anything else, then all...
Well, I guess the...
It's a confusing situation anyway, and this is something that we're going to be living with for a while.
And I think the other thing is, Mark, let's face it, the kids are going to all be going to school in a few days. And, you know, and I guess... And the other thing that... And we've heard plenty of cases that people don't quarantine. They'll say, yep, I'm home for 14 days. And then they see them out at the grocery store or out at Lowe's or something. So they're not quarantining. I guess this is probably... It is to a point protecting our own employees, but it's also protecting us.
Well, I never thought about it till you just brought it up. My good friend, my hunting buddy, Miles, came back three months ago from Arizona, one of the hottest states in the country. And he came back and lives in Norfield.
Yeah?
And...
You went and visited?
Oh, absolutely. We own the tower. We own the telephone tower.
Yeah.
And we... If we was involved in that, we all sit down and had lunch and talked it over. He said, I wouldn't say... He said, their numbers are going up. I came home. Usually didn't come home to June, stay three months, goes back. He goes here in April.
You know, but, I mean, we need a vast policy, obviously. I mean, that's important for us.
Well, that's what we were just...
With our people going out and doing things. But within the last few days, I had coincidence that all of a sudden I went, wow, never thought about that. And it's true, you know? You don't think about the people that are coming in to visit and where they're coming from. And now, potentially, the employee is now infected. And we're just allowing the employee to come right back to work. So now, the interior of the building, which is obviously a vast green environment because they are separated, they're in their own places, is now potentially contaminated to some degree. If there's contact between them, obviously there is, there's contamination.
But I think the other thing is, Mark, you know, here you go again. I mean, I could go... I could go, I don't know, I could go get my oil changed and say, I'm just going to wait, all right? Am I going to stand outside? Am I going to go in the waiting room? I think, I don't know, it's... There could have been somebody sitting in that waiting room two minutes before I got there from Arizona or from Florida or whatever. I mean, I guess I'm going to sit there with my mask on.
Right.
But is somebody else going to be? Who knows?
And a test is only good for the day it's taken.
It's only good for the day it's taken.
By the time, 10 days later, by the time you get your test results back, you could have become infected two days after.
Yeah, that was...
Now you're positive, but you haven't been tested.
Right, that's been my kind of... That's kind of what I've dealt with, is the fact that you can go to... Like Plymouth opened a site. You could go to Plymouth, be tested, leave there, drive through Dunkin' Donuts, and the guy that handed you the coffee could be infected. And you just went and got a test, and now you've got it and don't even know it. It's, yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know that we can...
Yep.
Have control over who visited... Who visits an employee. I can certainly look into it. But I mean, in an instance of that, they're entitled to use their emergency sick leave. However, if and when that emergency sick leave is gone, they'll be responsible for using their own leave or it will be unpaid. We can't, you know, I... We can't write a policy to address every single instance.
No, but this policy does... If you read it, "Any employee choosing to travel internationally", hyphen, "including Canada", on a cruise ship. Doesn't say in a airplane.
No, it says, "or domestically", "outside". It means any type of... Domestically would be air, bus, train, whatever, however. I mean, we could write it all out.
No, but you know...
I mean...
I don't know how we can contain it. I guess with that, with the union and everybody said, we've got to do something, we're doing it.
I mean, if we don't do anything, we can't do anything, is the problem.
That's right.
Yeah.
The policy, I mean, we need to have a policy. It's just that I'm coming into some unique situations, I would say.
And you know, but you know something? Even all of this policy stuff, all right? I mean, even the people, you know, in Concord, Washington, wherever, you know, two days later, they'll change it. Because two days later, something will... It's changing all the time. It's just they don't know. We don't know, they don't know. It's a guessing game, I guess, at this point.
I mean, I am listening to the DHHS update. They give a public health update once a week to the New Hampshire reopening task force. I do listen to that. When they update the guidance, we're made aware of it. This is what's currently out there. They're currently saying the New England states. I mean...
And obviously, addendums can be added to this.
Exactly, that it can be changed as frequently as once a week, if we had to, almost.
It just gives us a starting point, so to speak.
It's a place to start, yeah.
You've got to have something to work with.
Yeah.
So you can make the changes to it.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we accept this policy for the COVID-19 travel and quarantine policy, as written.
Second.
Sonny, second, Seth. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will update you at each meeting if there's been any changes.
And I guess maybe the thing to do, Jean, obviously, we're all pretty available, is that if something drastically comes through that we want, we probably really need to address before, to let us know and either, you know, post it and we'll show up or something, whatever.
I think the other issue that we may be faced with come fall and once school starts is employees that potentially may have children whose classrooms are not going back fully. They may be going back a day or two at a time or a week at a time. And maybe they may come forward asking to use their expanded FMLA leave. So we are likely to be faced with that as well, I would expect, as time goes on, so...
All right, well, we've covered this.
That's right. And I mean, under the CARES Act, we are... We, and I've researched it. We will be required to allow for that expanded leave, which can be up to 12 weeks. 10 weeks of emergency sick leave at 2/3 of their pay and then an additional 10 weeks at 2/3 of their pay, if it is being used because of childcare or school closings or modified schedules of the schools.
Okay.
And that only applies to full-time employees, people, those that are...
Full-time employees, yeah.
Or have worked the past 30 days. So there is, yeah, all right.
Okay, the next item is the engineering RFPs.
Yes, we had sent out an RFP with results due back on July 24th. We received three responses. I gave you a summary of the three responses that we received. We received them from Underwood Engineering, Du Bois and King, and HEB. Underwood has worked with us in the past on the road evaluations and a number of other road projects town-wide. Du Bois and King specifically have worked with the community on the Solar Village project. They did the water line replace... Or water replacement project recently up there. And they're currently working with Westview Meadows now on their water improvements. HEB was the engineer that provide... The engineering firm that provided construction administration and the final engineering on the Lake Winnisquam Trail. So we have worked with all three firms.
All three.
Correct. Du Bois and King and HEB did break out the engineering component as well as the construction admin for the two projects. Underwood did bring that together as one lump sum. And Craig is here, obviously, if he has any comments or...
In my review, I saw that the construction admin costs substantially higher than Du Bois and King.
I guess I don't understand that because I got it just the other way around. I'm looking at... My paper says that the... It says Solar Village, Underwood. One number here says 76,300. Then it says, "Construction Administration", 62,200...
64.
64, rather, 200, with a total being $140,500.
But that was for both Plummer Hill and Solar Village.
Correct, yes. They didn't break it out.
I didn't hear.
Yeah, they didn't break it out.
That was a catch for both, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. So, but the administration for both, for them overseeing this project, is $64,200.
What was the administration for Du Bois and King?
$24,000.
$24,100.
Solar Village is $11,700 under Du Bois and King and $12,400 under Plummer Hill. So I guess it's a question of what they're... So you meant it wasn't... You, yeah.
Okay. So what was... Do we know what the total construction administration cost was on Du Bois and King?
I don't have that with me at this point, no.
I just think that's a $24,000 in admin on both those roads.
Unless, unless, unless they might have some of it already done on Solar Village where they've worked in there. They know what they're dealing with.
Yeah, that's oversight. A lot of that, a lot of that money's oversight, it's not planning. Planning is in the engineering costs and it is high. The oversight costs, I mean, I don't know what, like, is that, I don't know what we spent on different roads and paths. Plummer Hill's going to be, that's going to be a lot of oversight.
Is there a ledge?
The cost of it's...
Is there a ledge on Plummer Hill, do you think?
On Plummer Hill?
Yeah, do we know that?
I would imagine there's a huge problem.
There has to be, right? That's why I was... I was getting thinking about that this morning.
See what's on the other end, the other side.
Yeah.
I mean, their description of the construction admin is similar. I believe it would depend on... So... Underwood's includes construction observation. So they would have a resident project representative onsite while the construction was ongoing. And that's the difference. There is not... They do not identify that in the Du Bois and King.
Was that part of the RFP, was to include that?
Construction administration was. We asked for a component of construction administration.
So, but we didn't ask for...
I don't believe we specifically called out observation or broke out the two. From my perspective...
And they were broke it out?
They broke it out, no.
Well, maybe it's a case where we need to ask them what that would be, the other two, where they did and the other two did not. Although, obviously, one's pretty high already.
Do you see that you like that, the proposal? Because they've done so much work to discuss. It was more realistic as far as the construction administration costs and the oversight.
Yeah, but the problem is, I guess, we... This is why engineering is that... Is that fine? Is that going to be the price? The price is the price? Or are we going to get... We going to get hit with...
It has been.
I know. Or we're going to get hit with another 30, 40,000, 50,000 in add-ons? That's the only problem dealing with this stuff that makes me very nervous because then it gets out of hand. It's all fine and good if that is the price. But it probably is not. So that's what bothers me.
There's a lot of variables on it, too. Sometimes you just don't know how long projects are going to be. I mean, some, you know, if you do an add-on project, you've got some of your pain in the mouth by the hour. The engineering, you know what I'm saying? It's... If you make a job that's going to take two weeks, it takes four weeks. You're going to pay two whole weeks for construction oversight. And it's, you know, like we...
Well, we can always, we can always, we can always say... We can always throw that cost back on the contractor because we can put, to be done, completed by such and such a date. Otherwise, it's so much a day, and that's going to cover your engineering fees. There's nothing wrong with that. You can put a... We want this, you know? Do you agree to complete this road by, you know, November 30th or whatever? And if they're not done, then it's a...
Well, we're experienced with hurricane. We decided to go through a section of that road and put 10 sarves and this and that and this. That number one, number one, increase the price. That number two, also increase the construction oversight cost.
But that wasn't initially... That was a... This is engineered. These two are engineered. This was kind of... That wasn't an engineered road, so to speak. I mean, we added, yeah, yeah. I don't know.
I guess that's my question. Do we really need an engineered road?
For?
Either one of them.
All right.
I think, I look at the cost of this, and I look at Solar Village, and I look at Plummer Hill, and I think, I honestly think those parts are hard. I really do.
I'm not convinced. I don't know.
Solar Village is a mess. I mean, it's not something that a contractor is going to be able to... They won't be able to identify it without...
Solar Village is a mess.
Well, it's also a mess. The tunneling approach is horrible. I mean, it's going to be the upper side of that road, it's going to be closed range. We're going to need site surveys. We're going to need permitting, if you know what. It's going to be, it's going to be a tunnel mark. You know, these guys are designed to go do all that stuff. You know, contractors aren't designed to be engineers. They aren't designed to get buttoned and remounted. They aren't designed to...
Is this, is this some...
They're not equipped to do this.
Is Plummer Hill, is this the engineering for the whole thing?
Yes.
It is, all right. From the 106 to the stop sign?
Yes. Well, I don't know, say, how far away from 106 to the state type, it's not right.
No, I understand, just beyond, just beyond where the... Yeah, I understand that, yeah, yeah.
You know, I admit that there was some...
Outlook drive, outlook drive.
Few advantages to the way we did Hurricane Road. But I would say the disadvantages are out there, you know, just in my...
Well, I think, I look at Hurricane Road as more of a re... What do I want to say?
Rebuilding?
Rebuilding, thank you, rebuild. Well, or, right.
It was reclaimed and then repaid.
Yeah, this one, these, what we're doing, it's almost like putting in a whole new road in this particular case because of the condition.
Well, I think that Solar Village is the bigger problem of the two. I know there's a drainage problem with Plummer Hill, but in some easement problem, probably some problems for site work. But the electrical wiring that's in the ground at Solar Village, what looks to be in conduit where they come down the pole. And you go 10 feet from the pole and there's no conduit, and never was. So when they start digging in there and doing roadwork, we're going to find wires and stuff that have been just laid in the dirt. And that has been...
Or worse.
Or worse. And so when they open this up, it's going to be a real can of worms. That's where the oversight and stuff, we know that. We've had people...
It's my philosophy, you know, we've got really good luck with somebody. You know, we've got some really good product out of the, you know, beginning. Every year, you're not changing from, you know, two different design aspect ideas.
So what's your recommendation? Stick with Underwood?
I would, yeah. I'm an onsite guy. I just, I, we did a lot of like, we were... We have the same kind of, you know, philosophy as far as how we build a road, what's going to be where to do it. That would be my recommendation.
I guess I'd have to review that some more.
That's just through experience, experience and years of working. You know, I think we've got some really good thought in Underwood, to learn engineering and design.
But I also think that they've been well paid.
Well, it's like a chain, you have space.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure I'm... I'm not 100% sold on Underwood, I'm sorry to say, because I just think their pricing is a little much. But again, I'm only one person.
Well, I mean, the pricing, we did, it's at the $3,000 in service.
Yeah.
So what if we got to take a chance with somebody else for $7,000?
Well, the other person has been used, obviously, within town, that's for sure. Well, both of them have been. All three of them have done work in this town. Yeah. Well, and that's... I don't know. Sonny, what's your thought?
I... Of course, you know me.
Yeah, well, what's your thoughts, Sonny?
I see that small figure versus these other ones and...
Of course, I know.
So, and get the same, same results, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Do we have to, we don't have to make decisions?
You don't have to, no.
But I think I want to digest this a little bit more. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sold, um, it's a lot of, it's a lot more money on all of them than what I thought it would be. But, um. Yeah. Do you guys want to make a decision today?
I'll make, I'll make a motion and we table it till our next meeting.
Okay. Do you want to?
One second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Um, Conservation Commission appointment.
Yes, we received, I, we received a letter of resignation from Laurel Day, who's been a member of the Conservation Commission. Um, she's going to be, um, out of the area. With some family-related issues. Um, we did have one other member of the, the commission that also, um, had resigned back a few, at least a couple of months, a month ago.
Yeah.
Um, but we do have one individual who has put their name forward. Um, initially was as an alternate because there were no, um, positions available. However, Rick was recommending that we, um, nominate this individual or appoint this individual as a full member, um, to the commission. And that would be Ed Stevenson of Nancy Drive in Belmont. So unless anyone had any.
I'll make that motion that we appoint Ed Stevenson to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, not to get, um, off, can I ask Jean? Um, we had sent a letter to the governor in regards to the intersection of one forty and one oh six. I'm back on roads again, I'm back on roads. And he had obviously indicated back to us that, um, we would probably see something going on within six months. And I, and I understand it, it's like everything else, it's who knows what.
Well, it is still in the tenure plan. It is slated for engineering and so forth with work to be, to actually take place in twenty twenty-five.
Right. So I guess my question is, is that could we just send the governor, uh, uh, letter? And obviously, we're not pushing. We understand that there's a lot of things going on. But just a friendly reminder that, you know, each month that intersection is, is, uh, not in the best of shape or whatever. Just a friendly reminder.
Craig, were you able, I know you had reached out to District Three about that intersection? Did you have any?
I talked to the wrongs. I told them that they needed a little help with, we might assist them. Um, we got to do something about it. I said gravel's showing. I said it's been helping by the problem, it was just last time they clicked it. They said they recently acquired a cold cleaner. So they could cold clean the intersection and take it out, you know, in a patchwork style.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was a couple of weeks ago, I remember that.
All right. So I think. So I think that that could maybe be included with the letter. Um, just, you know, we're, we're continually trying to, uh, get somebody to do something with it, right? Okay. So I didn't need to get out of, but that, I had that written down to ask about that. Okay. Discussion regarding recent water main break.
Uh, yes. Um, I think Craig and I were, um, very pleased with the work. I mean, Craig was extremely pleased with the quality of the work. I was extremely pleased with our costs related to the water line repair, um, in the vicinity of the church last week. Um, the bill came in at about twenty-two hundred dollars for labor, materials and equipment. And, um, additional costs, we had a few minor other costs for the actual parts, um, that ran about seven hundred dollars. So for about twenty-nine hundred dollars, aside from our own staff's time, um, we got an exceptional, um, project out of that. Um, I know that there was some discussion briefly when it happened about this being, I believe Craig told me it was like the third break in that general area over the past.
Like what, in a year, year and a half?
No, it was eight years.
Oh, oh, all right, for whatever reason. But we did have one a year ago, right, by the monument or something? Didn't we have one?
No, that was, uh, that was actually, that was the, the year that I was gone, that was over three years.
Oh, was it? Time flies.
It does.
Yeah, yeah.
So the question is whether, you know, at some point in time, we may want to be looking at whether or not that line needs to be replaced. That was an old line, that one has not been.
I would also recommend that we're going to, we're going to look at doing something in the future. Because we do have a lot of old cast, uh, we've done it down, we've done the trail apart. Um, I would recommend that we, uh, get some help maybe designing a gate, um, replacement program. Because the problem is with these old lines, the problem isn't fixing the, the problem, uh, the problem as much as controlling the water. And something like this does happen. And these gates are just, they're so old, for years they weren't exercised, they weren't, that they're not, we don't know, one day they'll be arable, the next day they won't. So it's really hard to isolate water in certain areas of town. So, and that's the battle that we do have when you have a break on these old sections. So if nothing else, if we went through, you know, took certain spots, Geeuwans Street, one forty, Churchill, and just kind of did like a, you know, made up some type of plan to, to change some of these gate valves. So that we, we can control the water if something does it. That would be my recommendation.
Yep. I, I guess, um.
First we pave it, then we dig it up.
Huh?
I said first we pave it, then we dig it up. We used that digging up Churchill, we just did it. And here we are now, we're going to put water gates in, you ain't going to be, they're under the.
Oh, we put two services in on the top, on the top of it.
Churchill?
Churchill.
Yeah.
When those, when those services came through subdivision, it was not the upset, but we stopped off in the sewer, we stopped off for the water. Some people recommended that, it didn't happen. So we paved Churchill, now we have cuts in the big, now we have cuts in the middle, by use.
Yeah. Yeah, that, yeah. Um.
It's in the past, can you fix it?
No.
It's just, up there, if you look at it.
Yeah. And do we have, um, the fifty million dollar question? Do we have a good set of plans showing where these lines are, showing where you, the, the existing shut-offs are?
We do. And we, and we drew a gate rod, we find them, we can, uh, it's not customary, you have something that old, to get onto that valve and work.
Sure.
Because if you do work it.
You could break it.
I, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I've, I've made the recommendation for years, if you go around in the spring, work four or five gate valves, wait thirty days to see if they leak. If they don't, exercise another four or five.
Oh, I, yeah.
To, to try to fix something as you go. But I think we're either coming out where, you know, like I know, I know the gate on, a couple of gates on Geeuwans Street, Dunbar, and then, but we had to have a good time getting that water off the other night.
Where did you end up shutting it off?
Where did we end up shutting it off? We had a gate that I think Eagle Brothers must have cleared by the fire department. So we shut the hill off. And we were able to isolate it right by the, well, right by the, right by the break. And I don't, just by stroke of luck, we were able to get on that valve. Because it was from me to that, um, box, it's pipes right there, away from where, where the break was. We were able to get on that valve, so that, uh, how we did it, I know it.
So did.
Because the gates on Churchill didn't work, the gate, the monitor didn't work, the gate over by Main Street and, and, yeah, well, the dentures didn't work.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's like the.
That's a hard part.
Water, it's, you know, a lot of them wrong. I mean, when we did the downtown, some of the pipes had been a little bit chipped out of the gates.
So what you're recommending is to, um, again, do a survey of the gates?
Yep.
And then maybe pick certain ones in strategic places and start changing them out? And then.
And if you want, and if you want to replace that pipe, build on when you want to replace that.
You got, you place it between those two.
So you could even do, instead of replacing that gate with one, you can replace that gate with two. So if I wanted to do this section instead of that section, go off that section, replace that piece of pipe.
All right.
You know, you just go in between two, you go in between two brand-new gates.
Yeah.
You run a temporary line of these people.
Sure, and then you, yeah.
And then you go.
Yeah, yeah.
But like these gates down on one forty, if you have something, I don't know if you're going to.
Yeah.
How's the money in that?
Um, we had appropriated a hundred thousand dollars this year, um, to capital reserve for water system maintenance. So we are, um.
Have some.
Certainly, I mean, obviously, we spent some on this.
Of course.
Repair, but we certainly have some funds available.
Now, is that something, okay, Craig, here, here we go again. We just had a break, we had a company come in. Now, is that something that you would, um, you could possibly, you know, locate, you know, start an area, however you want it to do it? Places where you don't think you have a shut-off or you don't think it's working? Is that something you would have them come in, do that, and then go on to another one? How would you do that?
I'm not, in the whole scheme of construction and doing it, I am not very experienced.
Yeah.
I would need, I would need some.
Assistance.
Assistance.
Um.
Why don't you call the liens? Who helped us out just recently. You pick maybe three of these gates that you think, your plan, you know, the town.
Yeah.
And say, how much is it going to be to do these? And then we'll look at timing and money. I'm sure they'd be glad to give you a price.
Just a one-day shutdown or something?
Yeah.
But it's, but it's hard to know.
It's hard to know until you get in the ground.
You know, you're digging it back.
Yeah. The problem is, these old pipes, you don't know what you're going to run into. You could run into a boulder that's, uh, you know, yeah.
We took a boulder off that pipe, and we had that bridge, it was three quarters of the size of that tank.
Sure. Because back then, they, they just refilled with whatever they dug back out. Yeah, yeah.
You saw it, right?
Yeah.
It's just, that's from back.
But I'd ask them, say, pick, you got to start somewhere, so pick three, if that's what you're thinking. And say, how much to replace these and get us an estimate?
I mean, at least if nothing else, it, it would help to give you a plan to, and obviously, that isolate. Right. Then you can at least isolate it. That's exactly right. And you know you're isolating it with something that you can turn on or, on and off.
Not worried about unsupplying three quarters of the town.
Right. Right, right.
Because that's.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah. That's a scary part.
In the moment, that's where.
Of course.
When you're, you know, when you're losing.
Yeah, two o'clock in the morning, when that tank up there is flowing downhill.
You're angry.
Yeah. No, I can understand that. Yeah.
Pretty, uh.
Scary.
High struts.
Yeah, I can imagine. Um, well, see what you can come up with. I mean, again, you know, obviously, we don't, we've got, we don't want to.
If it was me, I'd honestly, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy.
Yeah.
I'd call Underwood and ask them.
To do what?
They, I mean, they've done some of, they're engineers. I'm not an engineer.
Okay.
That's what they do, they design water systems, they figure out how to supply this, if this isn't supplied. That's what I do.
And they would come in and just, and they would come in and design two, three spots where you want to put a, uh, gate valve? I mean, I guess.
I don't know, I guess what I'm saying, Rick, is I'm, I'm the man, I don't know.
Right, right.
We just lost a guy that worked on a water system for fourteen years.
Yeah.
I don't know this water system like the back of my hand.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we have, you know, maps that say there's a gate, there's a gate.
Right.
Me, physically, I've never gone out to chase those. That's something I haven't done, and Tim's just learning.
Mm-hmm.
So, Tim knows the importance of what we have to do now.
Mm-hmm.
Because of stuff like this, trial and error.
Sure, of course, it's, yeah.
But it's going to take him time to.
Yeah.
Um, but I could say, gee, you're turning this off and, we, because a lot of places, we don't have records, we don't know where this is going to go.
Yeah.
And that's just from years of.
Yeah. Okay.
Undocumented trials and errors.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll have to talk about this some more. I mean, I guess there's no use in talking with linemen then, I guess.
Certainly look at options as to whether we look for grants from the state of New Hampshire.
Question, there must be, hopefully, there's some, I think we should look into grant money if we can't just come in.
Program that Luis, um, oversees, um, I believe would be something that, it's an asset management program, basically. It would identify, it would identify the assets, which a gate valve is an asset.
Right, right.
And then it would tell, it would tell us what needs to be done going forward. And there are grants that are out there available for that type of work.
Yeah.
We had done the sewer system, um, previously, um, under a grant. Perhaps it's time to look at doing a lot.
Yeah, maybe that's the way to go.
Resources as far as grants to deliver water, things like that, I don't know, hopefully they would be.
Yeah, yeah. All right. All right. If you can, if you can.
I mean, I don't know how much, I mean, how much, how much does it make sense to replace just a gate on a fifty-year-old bike? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, all right. All right. Well, if you can, um.
Yeah, we'll gather the information and see what's out there, absolutely.
See, you know, um, and we'll go from there. All right. Um, election workers' compensation adjustment discussion.
So there's been some discussion, um, recently about the upcoming elections and the potential risk to those who will be working the polls. The state of New Hampshire is going to provide us with all of the safety, um, equipment that will be necessary. So the masks, gloves, um.
Are we going to have sneeze guard, those?
Sneeze guards, they're, they're supplying us with all of those items.
Yeah.
Um, we submitted our, um, collection site information last week. Cynthia did. And we'll be picking up all of our supplies on August eleventh, I believe, um, in Laconia. Um, they're supposed to be supplying us with enough, um, protective equipment to go for both elections. Based off of prior, um, the two thousand sixteen election, they use those poll numbers to determine, um, what we would need potentially for, um, equipment. Recommending that, um, we increase the hourly rate for those individuals who are working the polls. So this would be your actual poll workers and your supervisors from their twelve and ten-dollar respectively, um, hourly rates to fifteen. And then that you consider a fifteen-dollar per how, per hour hazard pay on top of that. All of those additional costs could be submitted to Gopher for reimbursement. And I would also recommend that you add the fifteen dollars per hour hazard pay to each of our elected officials, which would be your moderator, your town clerk, your deputy clerk, per clerk, and anyone who's actually going to be physically at the polls that day, um, working, so.
Now, of course, just as a, you know, obviously, a follow-up. Is, um, everyone that comes to vote, are they going to be required to wear a mask?
They cannot require them.
All right.
Is, um, one of the guidelines that they, they should have a mask on. But Cynthia is having to make provisions for that instance if there is someone that refuses to wear a mask.
And, and even if we, as a board, implemented a, um, you know, like some of the town, like we talked about, the college towns are implementing town-wide masks.
Understanding is you can't disenfranchise a voter.
All right, all right. I'm just asking, I, you know, whatever.
So if I read this, we don't, none of the selectmen need to be at the polls?
No, you do.
They name everybody else but us?
Well, and again, I mean, if you want it to apply, I, we can certainly add that. This was just my recommendation, I mean, I wasn't thinking of those.
Normally, one of us is there.
Right.
About cool with that time all day, I mean.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
Well, and I had told you, I, I talked with Alan Nix last week, and I told him that I would be willing to help if need be. Let me know.
Right, we certainly could cover the election.
Help with, I thought it was mandated. I thought, well, I've done this longer than anybody to say with it.
Yeah, we've, yeah.
We've got to have somebody there. One of us is supposed to be there when the polls are open.
And we can certainly, um, submit your time for hazard pay as well.
Yeah, well.
Well, I'm not worried about the hazard, I'm just worried about.
Making sure we don't get.
Comes in with the dark glasses that lives downtown here somewhere, and he says, I'm not wearing a mask and I want to vote and I want to vote over there, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they are, they are meeting again next, I think it's next week or the week after, um, the election team, so to speak. Which is Cynthia, um, Mr. Nix, and, um, the supervisors of the checklist, just to go over their policies and procedures for those elections, um, the election days, so.
I don't have a problem with what yours proposed.
I just, I, it just seemed reasonable. I think it would assist the supervisors in getting poll workers and so forth, so.
I don't know if they will or not, you know?
Do we need a motion to do that?
You can, you can, yeah, it probably.
I'll make the motion, we accept Jean's proposal. Jean's proposal.
All right.
One second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, other new business, Jean?
Um, no other new business.
All right. And we'll go on to old business. An update on Dearborn Drainage.
Right. Myself, Craig and Rick Ball met with, um, an engineer from Underwood's last Wednesday to discuss the drainage issue that Mr. Sturgeon had brought to our attention on Dearborn Street. I know that Rick went out to the site with Allison, who was here to, to look at it. And so we are looking at the situation. Um, obviously, Rick, um, has his insight from the planning board meeting from last week, as far as they've, I believe, they've, um, basically postponed that. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, so we are in the process of, of looking at it, so it is.
And obviously, I don't see how you can make any big decisions, so you know what's going to happen on top of the hill, right? I mean.
I would think that would be a major problem right now. I would think that would be a major problem right now.
No. Yeah.
One of the things that we've asked them to do is just confirm pipe size and so forth, because that, there seems to be some discrepancy in that regard, so we are looking for that information as well.
As I said to Kevin at that meeting, and I've said it here, and I've said it to him personally, if it was okay for twenty years, and in the last two years it froze, there's gotta be something that's changed. And he kept saying, yep, you're right, but when, when you talk to him, one minute we're going up the hill, the next minute we're scrabbling coming down the hill, so if in this conversation, you, you have to go out and make him walk it with you, and say, if this comes out here, this comes out here, I mean, he's lived there, he knows all the, but that problem up, up the river, if you would, or up on top of that hill, is gonna be a huge problem, and it's not our problem, it's a problem of the man who created it, and he's gonna have to fix that, so before we do too much, we're gonna see what that's gonna evolve, because we're gonna dig it up once, there's no sense in digging it up twice.
And I believe it was noted at the planning board meeting that he had hired, supposedly hired, an engineer.
Yes, he has hired an engineer.
Yeah, alright.
You'll be able to test it tomorrow night, we get three inches of rain in a short distance, you'll tell us.
Yep.
He's a, he's quite a gentleman.
Alright. Oh, we, I got two, I got two guys that are really doing an awesome job at the beach.
Yeah, we are.
Ready my mom.
See? Okay.
And you know what? He now knows how to run a lawnmower.
Someone told me this weekend, um, an individual you know, who lives in town, who lives across, um, her parents, he went to the beach this weekend, and he said he's never seen a place so clean, he said there wasn't a cigarette butt, he said it even looks like, even looks like the cigarette butts are, uh, uh, uh. He said, look, he said, he said, police officers there, he said, and, uh, he said, it's mom, he said, great experience, it's mom.
Awesome.
At least we want this job for a living.
Sometimes people bring enough jobs, and you can get out.
Yeah, we got some insight out of that.
Okay, the next item is update on curbside collection of bulky items, so this is obviously trash.
Yes, we've had a significant amount of discussion back and forth about Casella and the lack of Saturday operations, um, at their facility on Route one forty, which initially had been available every Saturday, and then it went down to the first, second Saturday of the month, and then it was discontinued during this COVID, um, issue. Um, they have come forward with a proposal, they are willing to, um, provide a bulky waste pickup at curbside the first Wednesday of the month. Uh, the property owner or the resident would contact Town Hall, either myself or Alicia, to indicate what they would like picked up. We would provide guidance on its acceptability, so there will be specific items that obviously they don't take at the facility, and they would not pick up at the facility, such as tires, that is something that they don't take, that's not something they're going to pick up. Um, we would tell them what the associated fee was, they would have to drop their fee off at Town Hall, and we would then notify Casella that the i, the item to be collected, the fee had been paid, um, the property address, and it would be picked up at the curb, um, and then Casella will bill us, and we would pay it from the fees that we are collecting from the individuals to pay for those items.
Okay, so, scenario is, I call you or Alicia and say, I have a little refrigerator, I got two chairs, I got some fencing, and you're gonna give me a price?
Yep, we're gonna type, we're gonna have a price list that tells us what individual items are.
Alright.
And we'll tell you it's gonna be forty five dollars.
Alright.
You bring us a check for forty five dollars, made payable to the town.
Put it out there for that Wednesday.
For that Wednesday, whatever the Wednesday is, if it's the first Wednesday of the month, and they'll come by to pick it out. Now, if you put a couch out there.
Right, that's not on the list.
They're not gonna take the couch, they're only gonna take the items that you have paid for, correct.
That I, that I listed and gave to you.
You listed and specifically paid for, correct.
Okay.
My suggestion is we try it, I, I don't know how else to address the concern, we cannot.
How much are they gonna reimburse us?
Reimburs us?
Yeah, we have a contract that's good to two thousand, says it right here, December thirty one, two thousand twenty-two.
Yep.
Okay, and that was gonna be, where we could go there on Saturdays and use that, then, then they cut it back to one Saturday a month, and now because of the excuse from COVID, they've eliminated it. However, they're still working in that plant, there are people in there, in that garbage area, watching, because they're, they're receiving their, their, their root trash. On page two, it says, the terms of disagreement shall be a period of eight years, from January one, two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-two.
But the, the Saturday hours was not part of the written contract, it was a discussion we had had with them, it, it, it wasn't something, because we can't offer it.
I gotta ask you, what do they do in Lincoln?
You take it and you pay it, you go over scale and you pay a fee.
Absolutely, I agree with that a hundred percent.
But Lincoln doesn't offer curbside collection, and it's a town-owned facility, this is not, this is a private facility. I, I can't for, we can't force them to have Saturday hours.
Well, what I'm telling you is they're there anyway.
I, John, I can't, I can't direct their operations, we're trying to offer.
Personally, I'll be perfectly honest with you, if somebody will drive by my house the first Wednesday of the month, I'm more than willing to call, tell Gene that I've got whatever, and I'll drop a check off, and they're gonna come, they're gonna stop, they're gonna pick it up and leave it, I don't have to put it in a truck, I don't have to go over there, it's nothing.
There's no scale fee.
There's no scale.
Did it give you a fee schedule yet?
I've asked David for the scale fee, to make sure that it was no more than what they're obviously charging now.
I am, I am.
I, I wanna see, not only the schedule, I wanna see how much this stuff is.
Yeah.
And where, and this money that, and time that we're gonna take away from both of you, your time of work, that time, do we get any compensation off this check? Or there's some money, you, you're gonna own Casella for taking this stuff.
Right, I mean, you could, I suppose we could add an admin fee to it, I, I mean, I don't.
Well, there's only so many hours in a day, Gene, you're pretty busy right now.
But, in all honesty, John, I think the first, personally, I think the first couple months, alright, the first two or three times, she, they're apt to get several, alright, but I think in reality, it's gonna wean off. Am I gonna be out there when it's twenty below zero hauling something out to the road on a Wednesday? I probably won't be, alright, and I don't think a lot of other people will be. I, you know, I, I think, yes, maybe the first few times, they're apt to get quite a few calls, but again, if they don't get the check, before, they're not gonna, you know, you can put it out by the road, but if you haven't delivered your check to Town Hall, they ain't stopping, you know, until they, until they have the money.
I understand that, Ruth, but these two people, Cindy's very busy, so we add another moment of time, and Nick, you could explain the bill, and they're gonna bitch a little bit about it, they don't wanna talk about it.
Mm-hmm. Well, unfortunately, the time I'm spending right now responding to the complaints because they're not open.
Not open.
If, this would be more beneficial than that.
Take it or leave it.
I, I don't have, I don't have any other solution.
At least this is, this is a solution.
I asked them for something.
I'm in favor of trying it anyways, at least try it, see how it works.
I mean, maybe we set it out for a hundred, say, we're gonna try it for a hundred and twenty days. If it becomes unruly and, and people are not following the rules, and they're not bringing their money in, then we'll discontinue it, and you're on your own. I, I just don't know what else we can do.
Yep, I think we oughta do it.
Last week, I got complaints about, well, change, change, um, vendors. Well, changing to Waste Management, or Pennard, or anybody else, isn't gonna change the problem, there will be no place to drop off bulky items. So then the comments came out, well, why can't you take them at the highway garage? They don't have the space out there to take them, and then somebody's still gonna have to pay to get rid of them, um, you know, they want a, a, a leaf dump, yard waste dump, I, I just.
I noticed in, um, in Concord, if you, you go out by the airport and go down to Manchester Street, they have a, um, it's, I think it's a recyclable, isn't it?
It was the original dump, but it is a recycling truck.
Recyclable, right, and you know, I, last fall, I was going a lot, because I was trucking some kids down for climbing and, and whatever, and you know, they have three employees working there, three, four, I, I would always see at least three employees working there, so if we were even to consider something like that, first, we gotta find a place to set up, and it's gonna be expensive trying to run and manage a recyclable whatever, so let somebody else deal with that. We got enough, we got enough, um, on our plate, we don't wanna take on trash.
Oh, I didn't say I wanna take it on.
No, but it's just, you know, some people have indicated, why aren't we doing this? And again.
Well, we could be like Guilford and shut it off.
Yeah, right.
They don't pick up garbage, only in the center of the village, they don't go around picking up street garbage.
Really?
Really.
So you show up with your trash at a certain day in the center of town?
Their dumps open six days a week, all over the airport.
Oh, really?
Yep, but if you, if you live outside the center of town, that's where they only have their garbage, central garbage pickup, and then probably on Governor's Island they do, I don't know, Sonny, you work, there, there, there's, there's.
They might hire.
Governor's Island, who picks up the town, that's part of, they pick that up, right?
Yeah.
But, out, like Gunstock area, those, uh, all those con, houses out there, none of that.
Yeah, well.
Do you want to wait till you see the fee schedule, to just confirm before you agree to the program, or are you, would you like me to get it underway and get you a copy of the fee schedule so you have it?
I would get it underway, because it doesn't really matter, you know, no matter what we do, we're not gonna please everybody, and I'm sure, I, by the looks of it, there's some other towns that are doing this.
Yes, there are other towns that are already doing that.
Right, so I find it hard to believe that they're gonna charge Belmont a difference from what they're charging other towns, so I would try it. I would try it anyways, at least it's, it's a, um, you can always cancel it.
Right.
But at least we've made an attempt and, and provided.
We certainly have been listening to all the complaints, and we understand, um, just, our hands are tied.
Are you planning on notifying taxpayers on?
Oh, trust me, I guarantee there's somebody watching us right now while we're having this discussion. I, I had quite an ongoing discussion last week on social media regarding this issue, trying to explain to people that we were looking to address it, so we'll put something on the website, we'll put it out on Facebook, we'll actually, um, I don't know how long the ad would have to be to get all the information in the, um, newspaper, but maybe I can put some small notice in the paper for people to call for information.
Well, you put a notice, call or go to the town website, and it will be listed there.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
But we'll get it out. Um, I probably, at this point, I thought perhaps it could start around August seventeenth, but I'm thinking that maybe it'll have to wait with an implementation date of September first, that gives us plenty of time to, you know, get the fee schedule, tell people what it's gonna cost, and then they go from there.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I don't know what else to do, so.
They'll probably be busy the first.
I expect the first couple of times will be very busy, but then I think it will probably rain on.
And I think too with fall, you know, you always get that, we all get that itch, fall clean out, you know, and you're apt to get, but I think, um, you know, yeah. Alright, you fine with that, John?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move forward. Next item is update on park and recs.
Yes, at your last meeting, we had had a discussion about the Parks and Rec program, and when we would envision that being able to start, um, you had asked that I reach out to, uh, the director, which I did, and, um, she has agreed to come back to work, or start back to work for us on September first, at ten hours a week, as we had discussed, um, with the understanding that, um, obviously, certain things will need to be focused on, go, as we move forward into next year, beach management being one of them, um, you know, much more oversight of the program, Old Home Day, things like that, so, um, I mean, with the schools opening, we don't know.
All that is up, all, all that is up in the air, we don't know.
Exactly, it's all up in the air, yeah.
We don't know, it's a, it's an unknown area, it's all, but at least it's something, and, and we'll work forward. I don't have a problem with that. John, Sonny? Alright, okay.
What I wanted to do.
Yep, um, other old business?
I do not have any other old business, I do have, um, some items for you under non-public, so I don't know if either of them, I know Craig, you may wanna stay for the discussion of the one potential employee, new employee, but, um.
Anything else, Mar? No, alright, alright, appreciate it. Um, we'll adjourn this meeting, and our next meeting date is August seventeenth, and would you gentlemen like to meet at ten AM?
Yes.
Alright, so August seventeenth at ten AM, we'll adjourn this meeting, our roll call, please.
Sunny, Gavin?
Uh, Ruth Mooney?
John Pike.
Alright.
What, you got a leg problem?
What's the matter?